Call this meeting to order, may I have a roll call, please?
All right, Chair Boyd.
Here.
Vice Chair Hatwig.
Here.
Goldbeck. Halajin.
Here.
McNary.
Here.
Roper. And Simmons. Okay, we have four of seven, we have one.
Ta-da. All right, item number two, approved the meeting minutes. Meeting minutes are from September twenty-three, any comments, any comments or questions for the minutes?
No comments from me, I do motion to approve the meeting minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, meeting minutes approved, on to item number three. Approval of the agenda, any changes to the agenda? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I will second the agenda motion.
I have to make one for it, I said I'll entertain.
Entertain, oh, I will.
Motion, second, to my left.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
I was coerced.
That is approved. Item number four, there are no items on the consent calendar.
Correct.
To no continue items under item number five, item number six. Commission item A, please.
Okay, and for the record, we'll note that Commissioner Goldbeck is here. Okay, so, tonight, we have our sole item pertains to fencing at Saint John's Cathedral, which was considered a year ago, actually, exactly one year ago, in a pre-application setting. And now permits have been applied for and they're ready to move forward, and so they have an updated proposal, which you all received, and so I'll just go over it, and we have a representative from the church to add any details and updates on where they're at and what's coming next and all that. So, so we're gonna consider and make findings on the application, the permit application. So, Saint John's is located at R. and Mariposa in downtown Fresno. It was built in nineteen-oh-two. This is the Mariposa Street elevation. And so it is a brick church, double-height ceiling, flanked by a tower on each side of the facade, designed by T.M. Birmingham and built by J.E. Birmingham and F.J. Williams, has Gothic Revival elements, and it is the oldest remaining Catholic church in Fresno. The rectory next door was built nineteen-twenty-eight and is a three-story brick building with porches extending forward on the first and second stories, is part of the Saint John's Cathedral complex, and is part of the designated historic site, and is worthy of, you know, architectural merit in its own right. So, the site plan, the new site plan was provided in your agenda packet. If we blow up here, the, the site plan, Mariposa is on the left, and R. Street is running along the bottom. I've highlighted in red the area to receive new fencing, there's already fencing all along the alley elevation of the property, and so that, it's my understanding that that would remain in place. The, the green squares that I've added, if you can see them, are existing brick columns. Brick columns were a topic of discussion last time, and so these are brick columns that are already there. And then in the bottom-left corner, the Mariposa and R. corner, where I put the blue square, that would be a new column, that would be added, and it would match the existing, is my understanding. The two automobile entrances into the parking lot would be flanked by the existing columns, and there's one on Tellary, one on R., and then pedestrian entrances, there'd be one on R. And a large one at the front of the cathedral, and then a smaller one into the rectory. All of the gates are horizontal rolling gates, and so they, they would slide parallel to the fence, rather than swing at an angle. This is the, the frontage of the, of the main church building, blown up, and it's rotated ninety degrees to fit better, but this is the Mariposa elevation. The fencing is set back a little bit from the sidewalk on the R. Street side, and it's right at the back of the sidewalk on the Mariposa Street side. And it, the rolling gates are divided into two on this big opening, so part would slide here, part would slide there. This is how it would look relative to the front elevation, and so you can see when the church is open and the gates are slid open, you'd have a, a big opening to allow people to flow into the main staircase very easily, and into the front entrance of the cathedral. This is the R. Street elevation, and there's our new brick column there. And then here, behind the building, is where the existing brick columns pick up, and there's several more going down toward Tellary Street, whoops. So this is a cut sheet of fencing panel, fencing is proposed to be seven feet tall, and it has the, the curved security design that would face out toward the, the public right-of-way. It would have pinched spear tips at the top of the tubular steel pickets. Close-up section showing the post caps. The, I show this because this shows what the Downtown Development Code proposes for fencing. Rather than tall fencing being between the building and the street, it's meant to just, the, the design standards propose that it would just close in gaps between buildings, and that only low-four-foot fencing would be between the building and the sidewalk. However, for historic sites, the Development Director has the ability to waive certain design standards in order to assist in the preservation of a, of a historic resource, and so the director's indicated that she's comfortable taking this group's action and, and moving forward with that. So if there are any of these development standards, such as the height, such as the location between the building and the street instead of between the buildings, then she'd be willing to, to carry that forward with her decision. So, staff recommendation is to approve the application pursuant to two conditions. One, that staff would be able to photograph the site before and after the project, and when work begins, if there are any changes that come up in the final version of the plans, that the Historic Preservation Specialist be able to approve that. And so with that, we have a representative from Saint John's, who is here to answer any questions or provide any details that I, I might have missed.
Would the property owner like to make a statement?
Um, yeah, please have a seat right here and...
Give us your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
My name's Douglas Durevage, I'm the Director of Property and Construction for the Roman Catholic Bishop. I'm sorry, do you need my address?
Please.
One-five-five-zero North Fresno Street, Fresno, California, nine-three-seven-oh-three, that's the Pastoral Center.
Thank you.
If you want my home address. The only, really the only addition, if you, can you go back to the site plan where you highlighted?
Yeah.
So, yeah, right there.
So, if you could hear me.
Flip the lights.
Yeah, sure.
So there, there is one other gate that you missed, and that's right there.
Oh, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, because this pathway comes out, and that would open up also. But that's the only thing I saw that is...
Different than what the plans show, yeah, yes, sir.
If I recall the last presentation, isn't there some, there's a sculpture, statue, icon, something on the corner, is that right?
Yes.
And how does the gate layout accommodate that?
Well, it accommodates it right now, the, the existing sidewalk that comes out there onto R. Street is existing. And can I go back up there?
Yeah, yeah. This little T-shape right here, you will?
Yeah.
So right now, that's a, a brick pavement that comes up inside the property line from the sidewalk, that's sort of a path up to an area where there's a statue of Mary on a pedestal.
Is Mary facing the corner or the church?
It's facing out towards the, the street.
The street, okay.
So, the interior landscape plan is, conceptually, is to, once this fencing goes in, is to turn that statue around and develop this into a little bit more of a courtyard where people can come and, you know, sit, pray, generate, and so forth, at that point. And we would just change that, the nature of the fencing is gonna require us to change the nature of that brick path, anyway.
Okay.
So, but it would still be, because it, these gates are designed to be opened every morning, as long as the church is open, and so as people have access to the cathedral, they'll have access to that courtyard and be able to keep that, so no, no other changes from that standpoint.
I have two other questions. So the only brick column that's being added is the one on the corner, is that correct? The one on, uh, yeah, and then there's, can you point them out along R. Street?
So there's, there's existing brick columns here in green.
Okay.
Right here, here.
All right.
Here, here, there, there, and there.
All right.
And then there's one brick column, when we vacated the alley, that, two years ago, about, right up here.
There, okay.
And we added that column in conjunction with the requirements necessary to secure that alley.
And the last question I have is, if I understand this correctly, when the church is not open, the sliding gates are closed, is that right? So if somebody were trapped in the church, how would they get out? That's, that's a, I don't quite understand that.
Yeah, so, right now, the way these gates would work, there's a, there's a mechanism here, because this whole courtyard is available and accessible through this gate.
Is that a sliding gate, or that would be a, a pushgate?
Right now, it's a sliding gate.
Okay.
Okay, my understanding, I don't know the, the mechanisms for it, but my understanding is there's a mechanism that would allow that man gate to open, possibly even this one, too, that I'm not certain about. But we know that that's an issue.
Okay.
For fire and life safety and so forth, so that we need to figure out, you know, what, what that real mechanism would be. What is the, is there, is there a desire, you, the existing fencing you have along the alley is roughly six feet tall and straight in nature? Is, is there, is there a desire to go to the, to the, to a similar but different fencing with the curved top on it?
Well, it's a, it's a different fencing, what's been designed today because of cost. That is a very stylized fence that, back in, I think it was, I'm not even certain exactly when it was, it preceded me, I've, I've been here since two thousand and five. But when that fence was put in, it was actually donated at the time. And so when we priced what it would take to, you know, replace that, it was astronomical. And really not practical, because we were looking, you know, to really just provide security. The one thing I did find in the records from talking to our priests who were pastors there, is, and I, I honestly don't remember if that fencing went in with the restoration of the cathedral in, you know, ninety-six, ninety-eight, around that time, or if it happened before then. But the reason that there are columns all around the parking lot and the like is because that fencing was intended to go all the way around the parking lot and connect all of those columns. It stopped basically currently at that second green column that defines the, I'm just gonna call that the, the north side of that entrance, that vehicle entrance, coming in off of, pardon me, coming in off of Tellary Street. And for two reasons, one is they ran out of money, but the donor ran out of money, and two, the, the pastor decided he didn't wanna, or the bishop, I'm not sure who it was at the time, but decided they didn't want to close the parking lot in, they wanted to leave it more open. Times have changed, and we're just under attack more often. You know, we've had two fires on the front doors of the church, we've got homeless sleeping in the rectory balcony. You know, I've got priests who live upstairs, they can't sleep at night because there's fights and so forth. And you, you've heard Tom Force's presentation here a year ago, when he presented what's going on there, nothing's changed. We're still fighting some vandalism and so forth, with people breaking our stained glass and breaking statuary and what have you. So, we're just trying to protect, right now, the, the safety of our priests and our, our workers and, and even the attendees of the, you know, when church is open, too, so. But, that's what I know about that fence, so.
What color would the fence be?
The fence would be painted a dark brown, there's a, there's a dark brown feature on the cathedral itself right now that's sort of complimentary to the, the brick of the church. And the intention is to paint the fencing and all the handrails the same. Right now, we, actually about a year, eh, six months ago, no, it's longer than that. Last summer, I think either spring, we, we re-addressed all the handrails leading up to the front entrance of the church, because some of them were deteriorated, failing and so forth, and we reconstructed, added some features to make them more disabled, accessible, compliant, and had them painted. Well, unfortunately, the, the fabricator who painted them didn't use the right paint. We've been waiting to repaint them, to paint them at the same time when we do the fencing, so that they'll all be complimentary.
Are the gates motorized, the sliding gates?
The vehicle gates are definitely motorized. The ones at the, at the driveway approaches are definitely motorized. The front gate at, at the church, because that's a large opening, that's, you know, two-twenty-foot gates, just about, those will be motorized. The other man gates, there's actually three man gates, those would not be motorized. They, they can be, but right now, there, there's no desire to do that. They're, they're small enough and manageable enough to, to open them manually.
One last question, has the city, has the planning department seen this?
Yes.
And they're okay, you don't, you, they're not gonna make you put a, if you're coming into the gate on Tellary, they're not gonna make you put a, like a stacking lane on your property?
No, they, no, they're not gonna do that. We did have to, we did have to offset the gate, it's difficult to see there on your drawing, but we did have to offset the gate on Tellary Street driveway so that there's more of a staging area, you know, back from the curb. Okay, yeah. But it was one of those, at least, and, and we still have to go through planning for the final, you know, review. But right now, they're satisfied with just that offset, I think it's about a six-foot offset from where the column is, where the gate will actually have to be placed. Yeah, there's a twenty-foot rule that they like to get, but you literally can't do that here, you know.
Right.
And it will be open when the church is open?
No, you're right, it'll only be closed, yeah, so, and the idea here is that staff gets to the church at seven AM, the church isn't open even for business and for the first mass until eight, and there really isn't any reason that anybody should be there before, you know, too much before. So the, the plan is that they'll open the gates at, at seven AM, as soon as the first person gets there, they'll come out in remote, open those, the parking gates, and then open the other gates, as they need to. This has been through every department, I couldn't name them all, just at least a half a dozen departments in the city, including fire and so forth. I don't recall exactly what their comments are, but there were some comments about exiting and things like that, Knox boxes and the usual things, and traffic and so forth. So everybody's kind of had a chance to look at it, I know that it all has to go. Once, once you guys make your recommendations, it goes back to planning and goes back through everybody else again to make sure that we've picked everything up.
I mean, unless we have any more questions for the property owner, I'd like to open it up to public in here, see if you guys...
Sure.
I have some questions that is leaning along the same lines that I think you are, ADA and some other technical stuff, comments to make, but before I do so, you, do you guys have any comments or questions you'd like to state or say regarding the project?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, you're new faces. Are you some, are you some of Dawn's students?
I, it's more an extracurricular project that President State, if we go to a planning meeting and then we write a paper about it.
Uh-huh, very good.
Welcome.
Okay, well, thank you for coming, you, too?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for being here. This is a cool project we get to look at. All right, since there's no comments from the public, I'd like to bring it back in to discuss among commission members.
You know, it gives like the, the necessity for keeping the resource protected. You know, we've had too many resources lost because of vandalism, and it's just an unfortunate situation, because you always would hope a church could just remain open and people would respect that and, and keep that a sacred place. But we're finding more and more that this is becoming an issue with our resources, and I, I would rather see something happen where the resource can be preserved and protected, so my kids can see it, my grandkids can see it.
Very good.
Beautiful church, by the way.
Yes, I kind of second what Jason has said, is it's unfortunate to come to this point, and as I drive by and imagine that fence, well, it's better, better to preserve the resource, like you say, than, than take a chance and the harm to the priests and the community.
So, this is like my area of expertise, so I like drool all over this thing, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to town here. One, I'm happy that you're using wrought iron fence, that's great, we've got existing wrought iron out there, I'm happy to see it again. Some of the decisions you've made, they're really working well. The offset of the fence line off of the curb here, it looks like it's roughly where the, where the end of the turf is and the beginning of some of the landscape is at that location.
Mow curb or something like that.
Yeah, there's mow curb in there. You said, you mentioned having a landscape plan, you know, that, that would be important, too, because that fence over the top of the turf, it's not gonna irrigate, it's certainly not gonna mow correctly with a fence going through the turf, so reconsider that. One of the things that that does, you know, a lot of our cathedrals through, through history are, have been designed with fences, wrought iron and brick and rock and everything else, it's part of the architecture of the, of the cathedral. This one, all of these elements on the side and the front and everything, it's all basically open to the public, and all those little garden areas are designed to be, to be that way. They're not really designed to be enclosed by a fence. So, when, when the fence goes up, like you mentioned, changing or the orientation of the statue, creating a patio, these are all things that you're gonna find yourself kind of needing to do in these, in these areas, because they won't make, make sense. And then in addition, you can change that kind of frontage landscape around this barrier, so you're actually providing a space for the people walking through. So it doesn't look like, I know we're putting it up for security, but it doesn't have to ultimately look like it's just for security. It can, by, by moving around the gardens and some of these other spaces, it can actually look like it's designed and intended to be there, functioning as part of the architecture of the building. So really kind of consider those little details in there. Kind of what Paul was alluding to is the, the idea that, I think that the cantilevered sliding gates work really well in these areas, but for pedestrian access, they're really not welcoming, nothing says, you know, open up a jail locker or a meat locker like sliding a pedestrian gate open. So I reconsider on some of these areas, maybe going to like a double-swing gate. One, because you'll be able to put your crash bars on them much easier for ADA access, in and out. They're still lockable, but they're much more pedestrian-friendly, so even, so they're just, they just kind of give a better presence than a, than a sliding gate. But I love that they're, you know, in this area here, being able to open that whole entire thing, so there's absolute visual and physical access in there is great. A warning, though, because I went out there and, hey, talk to myself, your base map is not accurate. So the way that this is laid out here in the front yard is not, it's, these, these steps don't come out this far. Some of these other elements are a little bit different, so they don't kind of line up correctly. And, you know, one of the things that I was particularly concerned about is having, you know, these rolling gates, and I, I would guess that this is your only ADA access in and out of the building, but having, you know, the ADA access out and having only a rolling gate to that point, would be out the ability to get out in an emergency? I can't believe that permits hasn't picked up on that one, because that would generally be, usually when we, when we figure these things out, when we do our layout, we figure out our ADA access, and wherever that access line is, it's gotta be readily available, and it's usually crash bars and some other stuff, so we should probably double, double-check on that one, because usually a sliding gate in a situation like that would be a no-no. There are, I was thinking, because the, because the layout of the front, front area here is a little bit different, you could feasibly carry this, if the gates were closed, you could carry this ADA access across through the courtyard and out through this side gate here with a crash bar, if that was acceptable, an acceptable pathway. That's a little circuitous, though, and sometimes that's a no-no, when you're doing path to travel on that type of stuff. Oh, kind of last but not least, we've got, you know, as I mentioned before, we've got the existing fence up there, which is a, a straight, straight fence, and it would usually, either picking one, you know, with the slanted slats or going straight, picking one for the entire site and, and really kind of completing that architectural element, that the whole entire site would really kind of pull, pull it together, you're kind of committing to an architectural style, right, over, over the whole side, it would really kind of pull. When we start mismatching fence types and fence designs and light posts and different elements like that, it could really start looking hodgepodgey. And as beautiful as the place is as it is, we could really continue the theme of the architectural design.
I think there was a slide that showed a photo of the ramps in the front, if you want to see that.
A blow, the blow-up photo?
Yeah, there we are, there's the access you're talking about in the front, where the brick ends, that might be four-foot wide at the bottom of the step, so you could technically have your accessibility cut through the garden with the crash gate over there on that side.
So sometimes those little details, so I, I've got twenty-five years of history of doing stuff like this, and when I mess up, when I get the base wrong or it isn't surveyed, it's that little tiny thing. And I've got, you know, over twenty years of finding areas where I messed up my base map, and it's like that piece spirals something out of control, and also your, your, your fencing is looking more like jail instead of a welcoming church, and that's not the message we want to portray here, then, you know, and so by making sure that we slide these things out of the way, and as you mentioned, take care of that corner, care of the corner with just the fencing as it is, it's in the, in the, you know, sign, the cathedral sign up there, it's really unwelcoming. But if we can turn that around and pull the statue and make the courtyard out of it, like you said, that completely changes up that whole corner into something desirable.
Patrick, I'm curious, is there a process for building permits for a fence? I mean, how does this even ever get resolved?
Yeah, non-residential fencing requires a building permit.
Okay, okay.
So, before building issues a permit, they'll, you know, make sure all the ADA.
So, there would be an accessibility review, a path of travel review?
Usually there is, I mean, any commercial stuff that we do or we throw in a fence, I mean, that's like the first red flag where in your ADA path of travel and where your handicaps parking spaces are and your fences and your crash bars and it's always an issue like the crash bars on a wrought iron fence are an issue because you've got to put up the screen or a crash bar.
Right, otherwise people can just reach in and yeah.
And so, it really kind of messes up.
You keep talking like about ADA, it's a bigger issue, it's a fire life safety issue. And that's really what's going to govern the size of those openings. You're gonna have however many people, like, let's say for example, some, the same people who are vandalizing the church closed all the gates while there was something going on there and lit a fire, you'd have all those people trapped inside, so you have to make sure that all the people inside the building can exit and there has to be adequate exit width, so it's not just ADA, it's really a fire life safety issue.
Yeah, and I always add the ADA onto it because there's always like, there's always this portion, okay, there's a door, but what if you have a disability, you have to be able to get out of that door. So, oftentimes, along with the crash bar, there has to be footplates to kick and all the other stuff, which is slats, you can't, you're in a wheelchair and you're doing this whole thing, it's hard to figure all that stuff out, you know, but it's, the trigger is, like Paul says, is a fire issue. And then there's all these other things that get added on to it, which turn your gate that is just a door and slats into this big hunk of thing. And I can't imagine that, you know, if you were looking at that, is going to be okay with a slide gate on the pedestrian areas.
Yeah, and I have not, I have not reviewed the preliminary DRC comments from Fire and Building on this, so I don't know if they've already given direction on that or not, or if they'll get picked up in the building permit phase, but yeah, they'll be all over that.
My guess is they'll, yeah, they will, a lot of times DRC isn't going to give you all the conditions of approval.
The big picture red flags, you know?
Yeah, it continues on for a while in the process.
And those little things, those are details that are gonna change, really change the way it looks, the way it functions and, you know, when you start changing gate styles and everything else, you're gonna wanna, you know, make different decisions on how the times are at the top and their overall height and all those type of things and so, you know, we already have a lot of these things in play on site, we don't have to redesign the whole thing, the answer's already there, we just have to continue it and then manipulate some things in the middle to make it, to pull the whole site together. And then I was gonna make a comment about choosing black as a color, but after my drive by and everything else being the dark brown, that's a way better choice.
And all those brown elements on the building were painted last year, right? Yeah, so they're really fresh.
They are fresh and shiny and yeah, it's really good. Must look like they're a deep stain on a wood, like it's an oil or something like that penetrating, well, it looks great.
I think thinking about those things now in a forum like this is really helpful for the applicant as they move forward into these other departments, knowing that on a historic context, these are great ideas, but on a real world aspect, incorporating some of those things can fit both, both historic kind of nature and design of how it can complement each other as well as the functionality of it. Saves some dollars in the permitting in the long run and the design phase too.
Absolutely. Again, look at that, re-measure some of those sections in the base map. There were some, on the walkways on our street, I think they're flip-flopped, one shown as a four foot walkway, it's actually seven feet, and then where the wider walkway is placed, it's actually over to the south a little bit more and it's just that little three footer that goes down to that backpack on the back of it. Get some of those things dialed in. Again, I have like PTSD from making those errors in my own measurements, you know, make the notes, draw them all up, do the design, and then where I think I've got it all done, it's like, oh, shoot. And it throws everything off. And you do have to kind of go back to, you do have to go back to the drawing board a lot of the time, it's not just a simple correction, especially on something big like those gates at the entry. I want to make sure you absolutely get those things right. That's a great idea, I think it's just a little trickier with the actual configuration, it's a little trickier than it looks.
So, are we in a position to give direction on the concept and would we, Dan, see this again with more detail? How does this work?
So, they are in permit review right now for their planning entitlements, so, right, so we're recommending that you take action today so that they can continue on, there are conditions that you want to put on your approval on some of these elements that have been gone over, you can of course do that and it's your prerogative if you want to bring them back, but just be aware that that would be, you know, they're, before they were, it was conceptual, floating the idea, pre-application review, but right now, they're in the pipeline, they have applied, they're under permit review and so.
The question I would have for the owner is, what are the challenges that would be presented if you were to go to a pair of swinging gates for the pedestrian gates over the sliding? What challenges does that present?
Well, frankly, the swinging gates just aren't as secure.
Yeah.
We looked at so many different conditions about, you know, from vehicle standpoint as from pedestrian standpoint. I think the, because I know the buildings actually looked at this already, the contractor, who's the fencing contractor's gone through and extensively met with them on that and with fire. And if I remember correctly, I think it's in the comments, you know, from the different fire and so forth. Because these are security gates and they are designed to be open during regular business hours, much the same as any business entry that might be able to be labeled to remain unlocked during regular business hours, that's how these gates are being viewed. And so, they are only secured and closed when there is no business going on there and when there is, they're open all the time, unfettered.
Those accordion style gates at theaters.
The city has ruled that from a fire life safety standpoint, the city is okay with the notion that when you're open, you're open and when you're closed, you're closed?
That's what I understand.
Okay, so then it's just, it's I guess more of a, I guess an aesthetic issue or an issue of compatibility? I think, I think we would all agree that swinging gates would be more harmonious with the look of the building, I think, but I guess the last thing I want to do is mess up here.
Part of the, part of that disabled accessibility issue and life safety issue at that disabled ramp, the way that landing at the bottom of that ramp comes out right at the sidewalk, there is no possible way to put a gate, any other kind of gate there other than a sliding gate, because anything else will either encroach out onto the public right away or it'll encroach into the landing area or otherwise would, it just won't work.
Yeah.
So, it was actually, originally there was a separate gate there at that landing area, separate from the wider gates, but that created then a bigger problem of making a smaller opening effectively. So, when we split that into two slide back gates that opened up the entire disabled accessible bottom of the ramp and the entire width of the presidential stairs of the cathedral, it just allowed for a bigger presence to be open. I know that the plans, the site plan is not accurate, we were, I think the drafts person that was, that the gate contractor hired just used an old site plan from back when the cathedral was renovated and I don't know that they did much with the stairs and the site back then, so the architect may not have been that concerned about the steps in the sidewalk necessarily, but I do definitely understand your comments and concerns.
And it sounds like you've kind of worked through those particular details at those specific locations and have, and this represents a solution that you've kind of come up that...
Yeah, it's a, you know, every department, whether it was traffic or public works or the building, your fire department, they've all chimed in with their own comments. It's been a bit of a challenge trying to balance back and forth each of their priorities and in some cases, you know, there's conflict and, you know, somebody has to give, so it becomes a bit of a negotiation, but, you know, trying to accommodate the spirit of it. Nobody wants to make the cathedral not inviting, you know, that's the whole point of it is we want community to come in and so, and certainly to get out safely, but these are just a time frame now, so it's unfortunate.
Now, if things motorized, I don't know if somebody can override a motorized gate in the front and like push it closed and trap people in, I don't, I don't know if that's, that'd be kind of difficult, I guess.
Yeah, I'm sure it would be, yeah, that's true.
I think when the church is open, it's.
It's open.
That gate sliding behind the other, the other wrought iron fencing will just kind of disappear in a sense, it'll just kind of go behind the envelope and it'll just look open.
While the fencing would have the, you know, radius tops, if you will, the gates are not, the gates will be down essentially at the tangent point of the rise, so it'll run six foot something, I'm not sure exactly what the exact dimensions are, the gates essentially are a little bit lower than what the tops of the fence are, just the practical nature of how these sort of go.
So, I guess back to Robyn's question, are we approving in concept or we're, is that right?
So, no, tonight is not in concept, it is actually approving the permit. That is what is being proposed anyway, it's up to you whether you want to do that or not, of course, so you could either approve, approve with conditions or deny.
I think the only condition we could really make is the database.
And subject to building department approval.
Yeah, building department, accessibility and fire line, safety approval, you know, fire line safety.
But those are all known.
But those are already something they have to deal with.
That's out of our.
On the historic end, you know, outside of materials, I think.
The colors, right?
Color and material.
What's your feelings on that curved top versus straight top?
It's not out of character. I think it's fine.
I think the point of that is enhancing the security.
Yeah, I think we have to realize that's a real issue.
I mean, as we kind of went through the points and everything, I think I had all my concerns answered. We know that there's going to be continued work going on in the interior and the landscape and stuff like that, I think that those things will just soften up kind of a lot of the potential brutality of having a fence on the outside there.
Right.
Once you kind of change those things around and it makes it look like it should be there.
I wish we didn't have to do the curved top because it makes it look more institutional.
I think you've seen church yards that have that, look, I don't find that particularly not.
Right, so the argument against it is that the existing fence is a straight top.
But that's on the alley, isn't it?
Right, on the alley and on the other side and just having consistency with a fence. The argument for it though is the doorways have those actually curved features, so when you start borrowing, when you're gonna borrow, if you're gonna look for a curved feature and you're gonna literally borrow something from the existing architecture, well, it's the front door.
I think that the thing that I'm, I guess, most troubled by and I'm sure you are too, is the fact that Mary has to turn the other way just to accommodate the fence layout? Is there any way that it could be, if you're gonna go to the trouble of repositioning her, is there a way you could simply just slide her back so she's still looking at the street?
There's always that possibility. I know that nobody wants to see, you know, Mary or any of our statuary behind fence. One of the most troubling things that we had to deal with are other churches, Sacred Heart over there off of Cedar, fenced there is because the Sacred Heart of Jesus, that statue was being vandalized constantly and it stopped when they put fences around it, but you've now got this fence that is literally surrounded by wrought irons, beautiful wrought iron, the fencing's gorgeous, but Jesus looks like he's in jail, you know, and we don't want that, you know, we really want to make this more of a courtyard sense. We were, you know, looking to try to make lemonade out of lemons, right, so creating that courtyard opportunity by turning the statue around or pushing it back or something will happen there to make that more inviting.
Yeah, that's where my brain was going, if you put it back by the corner of the building.
Yeah, and turn it.
She could face the courtyard and the street and not symbolically turning the back on the community, right, and, you know, but it's still protected and facing that nice courtyard.
Is that doable or does that place a hardship on you?
Well, there's no money to do that right now.
So, as a.
From a hardship standpoint, yeah, it's hardship at the moment.
So, could we make a condition that when funds are available and they go to, well, you're gonna have to reposition her from the beginning, aren't you?
If you're asking my opinion, I would rather you let us decide what we want to do on our property.
All right.
Hole inside the property line to the best that suits the liturgical aspects of the church and the veneration.
Yeah, all right.
So, we'll do it right.
I just, yeah, I think, you understand, I don't, you don't want Mary's back to the street.
Yeah, agree.
I've got nothing else.
So, just a reminder, the staff recommendation had two conditions, but they weren't proposing design modifications, it was just a matter of Laura being able to document before and after and then if anything during the final, you know, building phase for life safety or ADA modifies, Laura gets to sign off before it's done, so those are the two conditions.
And I think we've kind of talked through our design concerns on, and so we really don't have any, so a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the staff's recommendation.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for taking so much time and.
Absolutely.
And walking us through it, it's.
It's sad you have to do this.
Yeah.
It is, absolutely, I have to do it on far too many of our churches nowadays, so.
Yeah, but also happy that you're protecting such a wonderful building.
Sad that you have to do it, but thank you for doing it.
Exactly.
Thank you again for your.
Exactly, thank you very much. All right, item number seven, chairperson's report, there isn't one, unscheduled items, number eight, members of the commission, any unscheduled items? Staff unscheduled items?
That's from staff day.
General public, before you go, any unscheduled items?
I don't have any.
Come on, there you go.
The spotlight is on you.
Extra points.
Do you rate this a one to ten experience?
I actually did go to one of these last semester and it was nowhere near this interesting. This one was, I liked this one a lot, I really enjoyed it.
It is a good one, I'm glad you were here for this one. Thank you for coming. Hope you get an A on your report.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
If you need a note for your professor or anything that you were verifying you were here.
Oh, she's one of these.
Would you like a printout of the full package?
Oh, it's there.
I've got one right here for you, yeah.
Oh, everyone.
I printed every page.
Got all the pictures and everything.
And don't tell your classmates that this is all downloadable off of the web.
Thank you very much.
Keep them in the dark.
Don't let it get out of the bag.
All right, next meeting, November 25th, this meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thank you.